Right, we are live right now, so everybody enjoy it.
Okay. Okay, seeing that it is four thirty in the afternoon, I think I will go ahead and call the EVPL monthly board meeting to order. First item of business is introduction and forum for visitors. I have two that were signed up to speak today, so the first one I have on the list is Christopher Norick. If you would like to step up to the mic and you have a couple minutes to, I don't even know what the official time is, but if you would for the record, just state your name and where you're resident of.
Yes, Christopher Norick, I live at two seven two eight Harmony Way here in Evansville. I want to thank trustees for being here, and I especially thank you for having the forum at the beginning, beginning of the meeting, very appreciative. I I rise only to say I support libraries. And it's a very odd thing to me to have to to come down here and just state that simple fact. Because as I look across the country and I see empty bookshelves in Florida, and I see children's books about penguins being banned. When I hear offhand comments at our county council comparing investing in libraries to investing in typewriters. But what was most disturbing to me is about a month ago in this very room, there was a crowd of people in support of Senator Tom's, our local senator, and his SB twelve. Which at this point will criminalize, it's already made it to the senate and it's on its way to the house, it will criminalize librarians for what is not defined as inappropriate materials. So taking that all in a whole, I felt I needed to come down here and say that I do in fact support libraries and I support librarians. So that's why I'm here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure how to take the comment about you're glad you got to go first. Okay. Megan Farley. Hello, Megan.
Hi, my name's Megan Farley. I'm a president over at seven two two George Ed, so we're both West Siders representing today. I'm just going to basically agree with everything Mr. Norick said. But just want to, you know, really let you guys know the impact that the library has had on me and my family. You know, when I, I've lived in Evansville since almost twenty years now since I went to college. And, you know, whenever I first started having my, my little, my little ones, I was a working mom, I still am a working mom, but you know, the toddler time on the weekends gave me somewhere to take my kiddos because I couldn't really afford, you know, extra classes or kinder music, things like that. So got them a little socialization and, you know, starting that love of music and reading out. We've used the library, not just for books, but for things like meetings with other local moms going through some things, some things that I was, I've met a lot of friends here. My oldest stepson was able to come to Greater Evansville Youth Meetings here for support, you know, in his LGBTQ community. So it's important to me to have a place that's not just, you know, free to the public, but it's inclusive. Which I think that goes a long way when we're talking about SB twelve as well, but, you know, we we feel loved at the library, we feel welcomed at the library, no matter, you know, who we are, what we look like, who we love. And for me, the library has been very important for my mental health as well. I was a voracious reader as a child. And, you know, you lose it as you get a little bit older because you get busy working, moming, but every once in a while, I remember, oh yeah, the library. And I can come here and get the books that I wouldn't be able to necessarily go to the store and buy because of budget limitations, but I've really gotten my love of reading back, and that's really helped, you know, anxiety and depression and I'm able to lose myself in a book and not have to worry about being able to afford it, which makes me a better mom, a better citizen, a better wife, so I just appreciate everything you guys do. Hopefully, we don't have to worry about these things going forward, but just wanted to be here today and say thank you for, you know, everything the library does for our community.
Thank you. And you're welcome to stay. Okay. All right. I have a correspondence folder for the board to look through. I've looked through it. There are several note cards in there, and then there are several five star ratings off of Google and one or two other notes. I will just comment for the record, it all appears to be very positive, so.
I will say while that's being passed down, if I could, on the, on the public comments, and I know those, that's a time to address the board, but I really felt like your comments were addressed to the staff as well. These folks did not get into this line of business in order to get rich. They got into this line of business because of exactly what you're saying, that the libraries mean so much to our community. It's, it's one of those bedrocks of a democracy moving forward, so I'm glad that these folks were here to hear your comments because it's them really that make this possible. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, before we hit the consent agenda, since we're absent a couple members, I probably ought to go on and point a few positions just so we're ready to go should they not make it to the meeting in time, so I would like to ask Sheila if you would serve as our secretary pro tem for this meeting?
My pleasure.
Thank you. And Valinda, our treasurer pro tem?
Certainly.
Thank you. All right. Let the record reflect that Sheila was excited.
I'm always willing to start.
And we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion or particular questions about items appearing in the consent agenda?
I do have one comment. I'm not sure, because I didn't have time to research it, what IFMA certification is, but whatever it is, congratulations to Lamont. Could you explain what it is for us, what that acronym?
IFMA is International Facility Manager Association.
Yeah, I should have figured that out.
So yeah, it was just a four part course on learning strategic planning and budgeting and project manager, construction manager, et cetera, for facility managers.
Congratulations.
Sounds very appropriate for where we are. Yes, it does. All right, so there's a motion, second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Proposed. Motion carries. Hi, Sabrina.
Hi.
Moving on to governance. I will let, Lori, are you going to handle these items? You want me to handle them?
They're yours to handle.
All right. First item is the preliminary general obligation bond resolution. That should be in your packet. Do I need to read that?
No.
Yeah, I'll just read the executive summary. So the preliminary bond resolution, this preliminary bond resolution establishes the maximum amount to be borrowed, maximum term of repayment, and maximum interest rate. Can I hear any discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the general obligation bond reimbursement resolution. If the library pays any preliminary costs related to the project in advance of receiving the bonds proceeds, it may want to reserve its ability to be reimbursed from bond proceeds after the closing. The Internal Revenue Service requires that a library declare its official intent to reimburse as documented in this resolution in order to reserve this ability to reimburse. Can I hear a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Second, motion is second, any discussion?
I do have one question. So my understanding of this, Lori, is that we have not yet incurred any of these expenses that we would reimburse. And generally, that is, it is minor in relation to the overall bond itself and the reimbursement that happens prior. But could you give us an example of the type of expenses that would be increased?
Sure. So if we have progress billing from Baker Tilly or municipal advisor or from Ice Miller, who's our bond legal counsel, our local counsel builds this monthly and includes work that they've done towards to help us bond, so those particular types of invoices we could pay upfront, also if MKM starts to work on renovation drawings, specs, the initial phases, then we can pay those and get reimbursed for them out of the bond, once the bonds are issued.
So that reimbursement resolution is simply about ensuring that all the work around the bond gets paid for from the bond?
Yes.
I mean, we'll initially pay it from other sources, but then that reimbursement is, we'll put money back in.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, hearing none, motion carries. Resolution to lease space. All right, do, do, I'm trying to bring it up here. So you guys, so the, the size of the package today was so voluminous that it killed my printer. That's why I am trying to read it on this.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
You should ask to have them print it out.
I did. For the next time. Because my printer was alive today. Until later in the day. Um, I, I might go on to just read read this memorandum just for the record, just so we have it. At recent meetings of the Building and Grounds Committee, renovation plans of EVPL McCullough were discussed. MKM Architecture suggested two options for contractors to complete proposed renovations, including partial closure, portions of the building for phased work and full closure to allow contractors complete access to the structure, facility operations, and parking lot. With cost savings and staff, patron, contractors, safety in mind, the Building and Grounds Committee concurred the second option, full temporary closure was the best. The building and grounds, she's got a better computer than I do. The Buildings and Ground Committee recommends the board approve leasing space at Washington Square for a minimum period of time necessary for renovations of EVPL McCullough in accordance with IC thirty six one dash ten and authorize Lori Tomlin, stewardship and governance officer on behalf of EVPL in concurrence with Barbara and Bauer attorneys to pursue negotiations of leased space. So that's the recommendation from the Building and Grounds Committee. I think we need full action from the board to approve that to move forward. So, motion?
So move.
Motion, second. All right, any discussion?
I would like to say that as a member of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, we did go out and tour the space that seems spoken of, Washington Square, and we think that it will be a very viable temporary solution for the McCullough and provide adequate parking and other space for everything to occur and keep those services going for patrons of McCullough while the constructions going on, and we also truly believe Lamont worked with MKM and reported back that this will be a savings on the overall bid. That way the contractors don't have to move everything several times in order to keep a small space of McCullough open. We move out, they've got McCullough renovated, grand opening, we're in.
I also think the fact that it, the proximity is there when you, you know, when you go to any kind of a facility and it's closed, and then you find out you have to drive to go to wherever that, you know, relocation is or different venue, you know, just the fact it's really literally, you know, almost across the street.
I wish I could report that Heather had promised to reopen the cookie store, but
I don't have that kind of
Oh, it's brownies, then, okay.
So, so not to overdo the work of the Buildings and Ground Committee, but there was lots of discussion going into this decision. You know, because we didn't want to take the decision of closing a branch lightly, especially a busy branch that serves a lot of our population, but we also cited on the idea of the potentiality of reducing the speed at which they could get the project done and the safety of our patrons, you know, just the idea of having our patrons using a parking lot alongside of construction equipment, construction gear, going in and out of a building that was semi-under construction seemed to weigh pretty heavy on the committee's mind. That, in addition to the fact that because we can do it this way, one, one phase, one project, the likelihood of getting more local bidders to bid on the project is enhanced, which I think is always a good thing when we're dealing with local tax dollars. And we should see some savings in the overall cost of the project, just because they don't have to move things around a couple times that we think will at least get us at best net neutral on the cost of leasing Washington Square Mall. We would have to lease space anyways to store the materials, so this kind of helps with that as well, so. So I, I think it's a win-win from my perspective. So we have a motion, any additional discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries.
Still have to approve this resolution, which, if you'll allow me, present it.
You're allowed.
Whereas the Evansville Vanberg Public Library Board of Trustees has discussed and considered leasing a portion of Washington Square as a temporary relocation from McCullough Library while renovations take place therein. And whereas Evansville Vanberg Public Library Board of Trustees has considered requirements contained in Indiana Code thirty six dash twelve dash ten and Indiana Code thirty six dash one dash ten for leasing such space. Now therefore, that the Board of Trustees determines that leasing such space is in the best interest of the library and authorizes the library to lease the space according to the terms of Indiana Code thirty six dash one dash ten. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees determines it is most appropriate for the library to proceed with the lease of Washington Square property in accordance with Indiana Code thirty six dash one dash ten in as much as this will be a temporary lease and qualifies under threshold amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars as specified under this statutory procedure. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves and authorizes the board to use the alternative procedures contained in Indiana Code thirty six dash one dash ten and to negotiate the terms of a lease accordingly, presented to the Evansville Vanberg Public Library Board, read and full and adopted this ninth day of March twenty twenty three.
So in particular, in normal fashion, I put the cart in front of the horse and we need to vote on that, don't we?
No, you're fine.
Okay, all right.
But you still need to
Read it for the record.
You need to have a motion, a second, and vote on this.
Okay.
So move.
Motion?
Second.
Second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries.
And the secretary pro tem has to fight twice.
All right. Next item is the materials borrowing policy and fee schedule. Heather?
I'm not going to read the whole thing, but essentially it sums up, we have to, we need to update our materials borrowing policy to reflect state statute regarding how you get placard. And it's just a few minor changes to that policy. Additionally, the fee schedule needs to be updated to reflect a new cost for an EVPL non-resident card. The current cost of seventy dollars does not meet the state statute for our minimum cost, which is reflected using our twenty twenty two operating expenditures per capita, so you have to be above that threshold. So the recommendation is to approve the wording changes to the materials borrowing policy and to approve the EVPL fee schedule changing the non-resident card from seventy dollars to seventy five dollars.
Some moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. Next item, employee handbook revision. Lisa?
Okay, so the employee handbook was last revised of April ninth, two thousand fifteen. Due to the length of time since the last update, EVPL administration reviewed and revised the entire handbook and then reviewed it with legal counsel. The entire handbook was emailed to each of you on February the tenth to give you time to review, but it was also in your packet as well. Proposal to request the board to approve the employee handbook revision dated March ninth, two thousand and twenty three.
Do I hear him? There's a motion?
Second.
Second, discussion.
We'll say this is an extensive revision, not the most important, or not the most exciting thing I've read in the library. But I appreciate all the work that went into it.
Thank you very much.
And I read almost everything, but I did have to admit, I did stop midway on this.
All our poor employees are going to have to read it now, too.
Well, then in full confession, when there were no pictures, I struggled.
Yes, it's true.
All right, there's a motion on the, on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Thank you for your, your efforts on that. Well, thank you, Steve. That explains no pictures. All right. Security manager, Scott, and then I asked for Scott to bring this to the board's attention and for our consideration.
Yes, what we are recommending as administrative staff, as you've known, we've had uptick in some of our incidences at the library, and along with that uptick, we've also had a difficult time getting enough security officers to work at the library. Part of that is, is salary, part of that is kind of how we have it structured after going through meetings and obviously a group of administrative staff and actually staff here from the Central Library primarily where we have a lot of our problems as well as our, our North Park Library. We have would like to recommend hiring a full-time security manager, that will be a forty hour a week position. Right now, we have a part-time lead security officer. And we'd like to make this a more permanent management position and to ensure that we are having safety for the public and the staff in our facilities and have more access to work with our security officers, whether they are hired as library employees or if we go with a contracting service in the future, we don't know, we're investigating all possibilities to make sure we can get security officers within our, the locations that require them. And this is the first step to do that. With that, we'll have to increase wages, as you know, we are going through a salary survey. And we've also looked at what our current officers with the FOP is getting paid here locally, which is anywhere from thirty to thirty-five dollars now. We have to be in that range for our security officers to be competitive and slightly higher for the security manager in order to get qualified person hired for that, so that's what we're recommending to start that process now. Eventually, we will bring you back when we bring all of our other position descriptions and the salary grade schedule, when that's come from our salary survey, you obviously see all this again with this one included in there again for adoption with all the other ones, and we'll start formulating a plan how to take care of the rest of our physicians as part of this salary survey. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion. In a second. Any discussion?
I do have one question, or maybe it's a combination question. So we do have off-duty officer who works here. Is this security manager, do you anticipate this position being, I mean, will they just be security or will this be someone with police powers?
It depends, most likely because it's a forty hour position, they probably, and Eric can speak to this being a former sheriff, they would probably lose their police powers because they'd be taking a full-time job.
It would be like a special.
Right, they would be a library employee, but they'd be working closely with any uniformed officers that we may have hired as a part-time or a consultancy service which may be made up of uniformed officers. Or it could be non-carrying officers as well, it just depends on which model we go with and and how it's recommended from this first initial hiring, the best way to run security for our facilities. We're trying to get some expertise in here. And obviously, this is kind of Eric's profession, so I had a long conversation with him, discussing all this and getting his advice and as well as we've tried working with some of the other security folks out there as well. Talking to them, obviously, our current officers have been spoken to, we've gotten all of their advice, and I have to thank Heather and Lamont and Lori, Charles, Nancy, all the folks that have worked with our security officers over the last three years I've been here trying to figure out this problem because it's just become to a point where it's very difficult for us to get officers in the building on a consistent basis, as much as we try. And we want our patrons and our staff to feel as safe as we possibly can.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, saying Scott and I did speak a lot about this topic, and that's why I asked him to read the board, because I wanted the board to, to have some knowledge of what was going on. It is a struggle everywhere, I think, to get this kind of security service, so, you know, I think we envision that this person is a recent retiree of law enforcement. Maybe some military, something along those lines where they would be a functional security person, but managing the overall security portfolio for all of the branches, helping schedule part-time officers or contract officers or whatever we have, but also somebody to, to catalog and document and trend events and things that are going on so that we know that we're focusing our attention in the right place. I envision this person as being somebody that helps with our overall security programming. Maybe helps us arrange for training for staff or customers, clients, could do a lot of things. And I think you raised an interesting question, and, you know, down the road, there may be some discussion with one of our other law enforcement partners about doing some kind of arrangement with them. I think first and foremost, we just need to get somebody on board that can help us schedule people in the right places at the right times.
And I do really like that idea of this whole concept. Because I know that sometimes, like with off-duty officers, they're here for a very specific purpose. And it really is regards to the law when it comes to security. When you have some in-house, then you also have the policies and rules of the library that the security force can help with. And I think that's a, a great benefit.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Finance. Will our treasurer pro tem?
Not yet, I think Lori's, Lori's first.
See, I'm just
She can do it.
Well, I see we are at eighty-eight percent.
All right, Lori, report of appropriations.
Appropriation balance as of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three was thirteen million, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred twenty dollars or eighty-eight percent of our original budget. There, if, if we were expending that on a even one-twelfth basis, then we would be at eighty-four percent, so we're pretty much on target for the year so far. And for in the investments, investment balances as of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three for all four funds that are invested in our state investment pool of trust Indiana is fourteen million, twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. The average daily yield for February is four point five four two seven percent or up fifteen hundreds percent since January. Or fifteen tenths, however you say that, and then four point four two 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 for the average daily yield year to date are up four hundreds of a percent since January.
Approval of bills.
All right, now I'm ready. And we have invoices dated March ninth fifteen, or five hundred and fifteen thousand, nine seventy-eight sixty with payroll dated March, February tenth for two fifty-nine, four seventy-nine, forty-nine, and payroll dated February twenty-fourth for three hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-two and ninety-three cents, and this is made in the form of a motion.
Your second?
Second.
Second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, hearing none, motion carries. Other business, registrar and paying agent bank financing, twenty twenty-three, Lori?
Yes, so I was contacted by Baker Tilly, our municipal advisor in the beginning stages of planning for our twenty twenty-three potential Smart Six, as we've been calling it, bond for Central North Park in Oakland. And they had asked if we would like to continue to use And they had asked if we would like to continue to use Old National Wealth Management as our registrar paying agent. Um, or if we would like to, the board would like to put it out for an RFP again this year. They did recommend that the, the actual pricing for that particular function, the services of being registrar and paying agent. Would be very similar since we just did it six months ago. Um, when we sent out the RFP before and there would be very little to no change in those amounts of the services that were provided. And you might recall that we discussed there were eight. Uh, different banks that had responded and uh, Old National Wealth Management being a local. Uh, option plus the fact that they were uh, their total for the five-year period was only two hundred dollars more, which was the initial one-time payment. Of being uh, accepted as their, our paying agent. So we would like to recommend that we uh, continue to use Old National Wealth Management for our registrar paying agent for the twenty twenty-three. Potential general obligation bond of six million dollars.
Defer to the board.
Do you go move? Do we need that as a motion or does the board need to vote on that?
If you'd like to make it a motion, that's fine.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and please note for the record, I'm abstaining. Motion carries. Announcements.
Just quickly, briefly, we had a long uh, director's report um, this month and there's a lot in it.
Yeah, it broke my printer.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry, the main thing though, I want to bring to the board's attention uh. Is um, Brownie Chapman is back working on the parking garage, um, finishing up the final scene and uh, sealing. Basically, the limestone around the parking garage, making sure that's all crack sealed. Um, work is progressing really well, Lamont's been working with that crew and doing a great job. Um, the other thing I wanted to do is commend the staff for Friday when we had our tornado drill. And tornado warnings, which wasn't actually a drill, it was real. The staff did an outstanding job of doing what they were supposed to do in an emergency situation, we had a great debrief afterwards. And when you read that director's report, um, some things that IT was already working on even before that happened, uh, testing phones, so. Tornado warnings come up on all of our phones because we have a voice system, they can do that through the National Weather Service. And they also set up in case we ever knock wood, this never happens to have an active shooter situation. That there is a way that staff members can put in a three-digit code and it will send an SMS to every staff member across the system. To let them know so we can call the appropriate authorities and have a way to notify everybody all at once, very, very quickly to make sure everyone can. Follow protocol, protocols, so I wanted to commend all those staff members that worked on that, the IT staff, administrative staff, Lamont, Heather. Uh, Nancy, everyone that was on that team and I'm sure I'm leaving lots of folks out, but they did an outstanding job, so.
So on the grounds, uh, all the grounds look great, uh, and they always do, we're always doing a great job with our grounds. I had a occasion to be at the North Park Branch and that's looking so good. Yeah, I just want to make sure that somebody's gonna repair the lawn where Lamont drove his JLG lift. Into the mud.
Yes, and, and North Park, um, actually where you see the faux rivers.
Yeah.
Where the grass is forever, because we're never gonna get grass to grow there, we're extending that river rock to make a natural.
That's what.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, and it's gonna look beautiful just like it does on the other side and hopefully we will not have that problem again. Yeah.
Um, because right now we just can't keep that out from underwater, so we're gonna try and beautify it that way. With some um, zero escaping essentially with stone and some plantings and. Um, our vendor that's doing that work does an outstanding job and they're in the process of anything we lost over the winter from the new planties last year that they're. Um, ordering up now and getting replaced before summer, Lamont's already on it on scheduling, checking our irrigation, working with the arborist for any trees that we have, we have a tree out at. Um, Red Bank that needs to be looked at, we have some bad gall on it and we want an arborist to look at it, make sure that it's time for it to come down. Uh, we think it is, but we wanted to just double check to make sure and get that scheduled to get someone to cut that out before it, it spreads to any other trees and. Things like that, so.
Alright.
Unfortunately, it's way far away from our other trees, but it's bad.
I'll fill that in.
Eric, this is Sabrina, I had a couple of comments.
Please.
Okay, so there were two things, uh, number one, um. I was, had a meeting at one of the labor, one of the branches and we are, the organization that I was with. We are all about this safety thing, so I checked at the front desk, just trying to find out where were the emergency kits. Uh, there was one, but it was on the opposite end of where the, the um, the meeting room is. So in the event of a emergency where we were, it would have been very difficult for us to get something, so I just, I kind of thought about. Not just that particular branch, but other branches, like what do we have set in place in the case of an emergency? When individuals are using those meeting rooms and so forth, so there's a. Whole laundry list of things that as this organization that we have to go through. And we had to find the exits, we needed to know where they were in the case of an active shooter, so all kinds of things were at this particular meeting we had to do and. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get everything that we needed at that time, but I thought I would just bring it to the attention. Of this board and then um, hopefully we can work through some things, so when other people are using that room. They could, they could have those things in place. The second thing is this. Heather was um. Go, so, was, was going to give a report on the update of Black History Month. Uh, it was supposed to have been done at last month and she forgot. And so I'd ask her, well, she told me that she would give it an update to thi- this month. But I, I don't think that that's been done, and so um, I would just like to just say that. When I think about equity, it's, it's everybody's job, it's, it's not just my job, I feel like I'm the equity police when it comes to. Um, ensuring that. Um, that the library, even though the doors are open to everyone, not everyone feels included. Uh, as far as looking at the website and finding um. People of different ethnicities on the site, just having programs that encompass the entire community. I, those are the things that when I, when I'm in the meeting, I'm listening and I'm, I'm, I, I, it's, it's somewhat void. And so I just wanted to just, I just bring it to our attention that it is, it's, it's all about our responsibility. To ensure that equity is for everyone and that just because the doors are open, it doesn't mean that everyone feels like they're welcome. And, and I'm just hearing that, just trying to get more people of color into the library. And then when I don't hear about the Black History Program, which I'm sure they, that there was something done, because she told me, we did a lot, but I just, I forgot. So sometimes it just doesn't seem that it is, it is, is having some, some equal footing on it. And I know I bring up minority contractors, I'm bringing up how, you know, how are we getting uh, our biz out, like I'm, I'm that person. And if, and if I'm not at the table, sometimes I think that it just, it will just go unsaid. So those were the two comments that I just wanted to just bring, doesn't require any action today, I just wanted to bring it to the forefront. And hopefully moving forward, uh, we can all be aware. And then maybe next month, He- Heather can, you know, share whatever she was gonna share last month at our March meeting regarding. All of the, the program and whatever they did for Black History Month.
And we will do that, um, Sabrina, um, Heather was called out on a family emergency during this meeting. I got a text from her, that's why she had not done that, she was planning to do that under announcements tonight, so.
Okay, thank you so much, Scott. That's alright, I understand emergencies. Thank you.
Sabrina, we do have a, in front of all the board members, we also got a packet of information. For Black History as well as women his, women's history, so we did, I don't know if you can, probably can't see it, uh, anyway.
It's okay, I'll get it.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, we, they did have that out for us when we came in.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comments and, and you're, you are right, I'll go with the second one first. Diversity is for everybody, not just one group, and you shouldn't have to feel like the diversity police for us. Um, we all have a responsibility in that, and then I would like to talk a little bit more later on about the. You used the word emergency kit and I think that's an interesting concept because I'm not exactly sure how to define that. But I do think that with the motion that we had about having a safety manager or a security manager. That is very much in the purview of what we would envision, at least I would envision for a role like that to make sure that we are prepared and equipped to handle those. And you mentioned something about the group that you are a part of, had a list or a checklist of things you had to find out or do where your meeting is. I would love to see what that checklist looks like, just so we kind of have a barometer of what, 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 another organization that might be using our spaces is looking for. Whether we can or cannot meet all those, I, I don't know, but it'd be interesting to know.
Sure, we have an emergency response.
The other part about that is that uh, it has to be known whoever is using the facility. There has to be some way of making them aware of, this is where that information is, it's one thing to have the information. And, and the group, say your group is there and they don't know how to access that information. And so the other part of this is making sure that whatever it is, is visible enough. So that when people come in, they are aware, here's the emergency information in the event that you need it. Uh, and you don't need it in a.
No.
Because nobody has time to read that, but something quickly to access it. So that's visible.
Uh, a hundred percent agree that it, it doesn't do you any good if people don't know about it, so. You know, probably something that's handed out to an organization when they reserve our space. And then something that's available in the reserved space rooms, that's pretty high level. You know, bullet pointed, here are the things you need to know about this facility and where you need to go, and if you have questions, here's where you turn for questions. And I feel bad that I don't know this, AEDs in the library, yea or nay?
Mm-hmm, nay.
Okay.
Cause I checked.
Was that on the list?
That was on my list, that was on my checklist, yeah.
It, it has been discussed, we have a task force, you know, you are, you are looking into, we're looking at AEDs, the training that comes with that. You know, even down to possibly, you know, the ARAM and all that stuff, correct? First aid, you know, we want to make sure that we don't just place something in our facility that our staff is not equipped to do.
No, those have to be very well thought out and overt actions and decisions made, what you are and aren't gonna do. So.
Definitely, thanks the uh, discussion around the security.
Exactly.
And what's done for one has to be done for all.
Lori.
I just have two quick announcements, I wanted to let the board know that the Indiana State Library Annual Report. Has been completed and submitted and has been uploaded to the Board Book Documents folder. Uh, you would like to review that, and my second, uh, it's just a very brief, I need signatures from all of you, so don't take off.
There you go, any additional announcements? Thank you to all of you from the staff that are here tonight, appreciate it, appreciate all you do, um, I will call for an adjournment. We're adjourned.